Excellent. Welcome, everybody, to the Carlisle Select Board Meeting on Tuesday, June 28. This evening, we are beginning with an executive session at 6:30, and then we will return at 7 o'clock for our regular meeting. May I have a motion to enter executive session, please?
So I move that the board enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Paragraph 2, to conduct strategy session in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union employee. As an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the town's negotiating position. And I also move that the board enter to executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Paragraph 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Assessors Map 6, Parcel 5-7-0, and Map 5, Parcel 4-3-8. As an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's negotiating position. And that afterward, the board will return to open session.
Do you have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, we can do this by voice vote. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. All right, we'll move to executive session. Good evening. Sorry for the delay, we were in executive session, but we will begin our regular Select Board Meeting now. Just briefly, I want to review the agenda for this evening. We have community input, followed by discussion with the ARPA Committee about some grants that are coming up. We have a decision to make about continuing COVID testing. We have an appointment for a full-time police officer. Laurie Eckler is here from the Youth Commission. Then we'll do annual appointments and liaison assignments, followed by a discussion about the fiscal year 22 Select Board Goals, a review of those and evaluation. And then the Town Administrators Report, followed by liaison reports, if we have them. Appointments and resignations, and then finally, we'll review the warrants and approve some cemetery deeds. So we have a full agenda, as always. Anyway, is there anyone online that would like to offer community input? If so, if you could either show your face and raise your hand, or use the chat function to raise your hand, we'd be happy to recognize you. All right, well, seeing none. And there are no additional members here in the audience, unless, did somebody want to do community input? No? Oh, you're just ready to go for the next item? Okay, great, I know, we're trying to get back on time. So anyway, welcome Scott Triola from the ARPA Committee, and then we also have Kate Reed, who serves for the Select Board on the ARPA Committee.
Thank you very much, and is this coming through okay? I know there's been issues with some audio. First, let me hand out an updated table. You had received this in the packet, although the ARPA recommendations and some dollar amounts were not included. So I'll give you that and pass it around. What I wanted to do tonight is very quickly just give a quick update since we last met on the ARPA grant and ARPA projects that were approved, and then quickly move into some additional recommendations the committee has for requests that we received subsequent to when we last met. So in the packet, I had provided a summary of the ARPA projects that had been previously approved. Those totaled $329,247. I won't go through each one, other than to say, I think with the exception of some of the infrastructure projects, they're all underway. One notable thing is the Gleason Library Rooftop Unit. I spoke with TMS, who I'll talk about a little bit more. They're currently evaluating if we can, in fact, use ARPA funds for that. I think when we approved that, we said we weren't sure the procurement process, which already happened, if it would meet the federal procurement requirements. Andy is a little more optimistic, and we may be able to use ARPA funds for that, but that evaluation is ongoing. Because as you can imagine, the confluence of federal and state procurement guidelines and the evolving nature of the ARPA final rule, which apparently isn't totally final, leaves a lot of gray areas. So TBD on that one. The other, the other thing I wanted to note was that we did, the ARPA Committee did enter into an hourly agreement with TMS to provide procurement support using the contingency and admin funds. So they have gone back and reviewed all the projects previously approved. They will be reviewing every new project approval to make sure that the procurement process either has or will comply with the federal procurement guidelines. And that's, I think, from our committee's standpoint, that's the key admin/oversight function that we need with regard to ARPA. I think the other admin funds are minimal, but with procurement, it's a very complicated process, and currently in town, we don't have federal procurement expertise, or a lot of federal, or procurement support in general. So I think we're really happy to have them on board. Yeah. They're a paid consultant. Yeah. And they're on an hourly on-demand basis, so as we need a review, they'll do a review. Other than that, like I said, these projects are underway. I won't go through each and every one. If you have specific questions about any of them, I'd be happy to provide whatever update I have. But I did want to move on to the new ARPA funding requests. As I said, since we last met, we had around seven or eight new requests. And we've been, we've met as a committee five times since, since town meeting. And the focus of those meetings has been both bringing TMS into the fold and also deliberating these requests. So tonight, I want to review those. The first being the town meeting electronic voting system. I'm not sure if you're familiar with this. This was submitted on behalf of the town moderator and the town clerk. And this project will acquire software, hardware, and necessary equipment that will streamline the vote counting process at town meeting. It was designed and used by the House of Representatives, and it's used for town meetings in over 40 Massachusetts communities. Basically, each registered voter attending a Carlisle Town Meeting will get a small, essentially clicker, with yes, no, and I think there's three buttons, very simple. And they'll use that to register their vote when the moderator calls for a vote count. Not necessarily every vote, but in sensitive topics or topics that are close, we would use this electronic voting system. The key advantage of this system are, one, it significantly speeds up the vote counting process. Wayne estimates that that can save up to 15 to 20 minutes per hand vote. And by his count, we have two to three of those per town meeting, so it could save significant time. It improves the accuracy and reliability of votes. And it also allows voting anonymity for sensitive issues. So, you know, this is an important thing to think about. There are a lot of votes where people are hesitant to voice their position, because we do have to raise a hand, raise a card. And in other towns, they've seen some, some of the voting dynamics shift a little bit, and it gives a little more insight into the, the population.
One might argue the spirit of town meeting is
It's open.
Open.
But that's, I take
Go ahead. 500. So
He said optimistically.
Well, no, he, they did it based on kind of a maximum they've seen, and, you know, having the ability to have extra clickers. They should last, yeah, multiple years on a charge. We've had discussions about maintaining them, and it seems all very feasible.
I was going to say, they also looked into the difference between 300 and then renting 200, if there was going to be a big thing, and it turned out to be cheaper to buy the extra 200.
You know, one of the things our committee asked about is how does, how would this relate to the pandemic? Obviously, speeding up town meeting is a good thing. It also facilitates outdoor meetings, which currently, as Wayne said, it requires securing of the perimeter to ensure that only registered voters are actually voting. And so with, with the, the system, which will work outdoors, it will make it easier to ensure that the votes being cast are by registered voters, because you have to prove your residency before getting a clicker. And it also does allow more flexible use of space and multi-room setups, should we need in the future to have additional spacing or create additional areas for people at higher risk. This uses a radio technology, so you can set up classrooms. You can have people vote easily from the cafeteria or other locations. From their cars, as they drive by. So, in our, you know, so our committee, you know, reviewed this. We had a formal vote, two committee members, myself and Kate were there. Both of us voted in favor of this. John, who was not able to attend the meeting, wasn't able to vote. I did ask for his position subsequent to it in an email. He did not support using ARPA funds for this. His, his perspective was that he wasn't opposed to the voting system per se. He felt that the, in terms of the urgency or priority of this system, didn't necessarily demand ARPA funds at this time, and his preference would be to see other funding sources used for this. John, he's the third committee member.
You guys are for it.
Yeah, we had two committees, the formal vote was 2-0. We had one committee member who wasn't there, who I asked for his position, and
It should be town funds.
Town funds, yeah.
I'm sorry, John.
John, our third committee member, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, I think basically, he would just see a different funding source than ARPA for this. So that's the, the first recommendation. The second recommendation is for the Wilkins HVAC project. This is submitted by the Carlisle Public School and Carlisle School Committee. This is a revised request, which would fund a multi-head split system being installed in the Wilkins Building, which I think, as we, most of us know, has poor ventilation and little to no air conditioning. While their HVAC needs in other areas of the school, Wilkins is the clear top HVAC priority. This system is less invasive with regards to the ductwork and roof membrane penetration, which is why this amount, and this quote, is much less than what had previously been discussed, which was closer to $700,000. That was more of a full duct installation system. There'd be, you know, ceiling cartridges, and then those window-mounted, or the wall-mounted air handlers and condensers would be used to cool the classrooms. In addition to improving the HVAC in Wilkins, the system would also positively impact the air quality in both Spalding and Grants, with buildings which are adjacent. And then this amount that's being requested is based on a comprehensive quote from Denron Hall Plumbing and HVAC. If ARPA funds were to be, were to be approved by the Select Board, we will need to get updated quotes from two vendors to comply with federal procurement guidelines. This is an ongoing discussion. I know they're, I think they're meeting tomorrow about this. So, of course, you know, the amount is subject to change when you put it out for quote, but that's what this request is. And the committee, the vote was 2-0 in support, and John voiced his, his support via email for this, for this project. The third item is, it's, it's a, it doesn't map with one of the submissions, but I'll talk about that. It's the Carlisle Cultural Council Grant. So in this recommendation, we're recommending a one-time, non-recurring $50,000 grants to be provided to the Carlisle Cultural Council to assist Carlisle's cultural organizations in the recovery from the financial impacts of the pandemic. The committee supports this grant with the understanding that this amount is for the entire ARPA-eligible period, beginning March 3, 2021, and ending December 20, December 31, 2024. So our intent is to make this a one-time grant. And to date, we've received multiple ARPA requests from non-governmental cultural entities like the Carlisle Chamber Orchestra, Old Home Day, and even the Carmel mosquito. And we expect to receive more. We believe these types of requests are best evaluated and prioritized by the Cultural Council, and any funds we pass to these organizations would likely need to go through the Carlisle Cultural Council as grants, and would need to be administered as such. And so, you know, given that their purpose is to cultivate and advocate for the cultural community in Carlisle, we met with, we met with them, and they've agreed to create, define, and manage the funding process and ongoing administrative tasks to both administer and monitor these funds to ensure they're in compliance. As you know, community and character are two of the five core Carlisle values that were identified in the master plan. And we believe the amount of $50,000 is a reasonable amount to support organizations in this area. This amount plus the previous 15,000 total, which was approved for Old Home Day and the Cultural Council, would total 65,000 in support to Carlisle's cultural institutions. This represents just over 4% of our total ARPA funds. And again, we, we recommend this single grant to cover the entire ARPA term, as we recognize the financial needs may be front-loaded, and prefer to let the Cultural Council prioritize both when and where the funds are distributed. We talked about maybe we do a certain amount now and a certain amount next year, but in the end, we thought it was much simpler to just say, here's your funds for the term. You manage it, you work with the cultural institutions. That's above the 15.
I mean, you give them like a block grant.
Block grant.
So what, what, what again is the term?
It, so the money would be for them to use during the ARPA-eligible period. So it would, the organizations could submit for expenses beginning March 2021, March 3, and then up until, and ending December 31, 2024. So these would be the, in our view, the entirety of funds we would provide to the Cultural Council.
Another two and a half years.
Yeah. And I, you know, just based on the requests that have come into date, and I think once, once they put out a grant process, and they've, they've drafted what that process will be, and it's going to be actually a fairly comprehensive process involving like their financials. I'm sure there'll be additional requests forthcoming from different institutions.
To the Cultural Council.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And any requests we get in to us that fits within this purview, we would redirect to the Cultural Council. Because we just don't have the perspective or expertise to evaluate and prioritize those, but
It's two that came into us that we said
Yeah. Yeah. Moving along, there was a request made for high-speed internet access to 50 Acre Way. The ARPA Committee does not support the use of funds to bring high-speed internet access from South Street to the residents of 50 Acre Way. Currently, the residents only have access to DSL, which has proven unreliable and insufficient for the current remote working and remote education demands that are being placed on folks with COVID. The amount of the request was $99,901, which is the customer contribution amount quoted by Comcast to install, install the high-speed line. The total project cost is $110,201, with Comcast generously covering the first $10,300 of the install. And, you know, we're very sympathetic to the residents' lack of high-speed internet access, but we don't support the use of ARPA funds for this project, given both the high expense and limited number of household serves. And it's also not clear if this project is eligible as a government service under the ARPA requirements. In its deliberations, the committee did express potential interest in supporting a townwide initiative to close remaining gaps in high-speed internet access in coordination with Comcast or other broadband provider. So again, I, you know, there's, there's certainly need there. I'm sure there's needs in other parts of towns, but this amount of money for this purpose didn't seem appropriate. And then the last one, which may tie into your next agenda item, was the request for an estimate of up to $250,000 for continued town resident and worker, worker COVID testing submitted by the Carlisle Fire Department and Local Emergency Planning Committee. We do not support, and I should say, aside from the electronic voting system, all the other votes were 2-0, supporting the position being expressed there, and John supported the position expressed here on the other ones.
Tested the electronic voting.
I would like to. The last one is the, the COVID testing, and we don't support, to recommend, local ARPA funding for this continued PCR testing at the estimated amount of $250,000. Our position is primarily driven by the elimination of PCR testing requirements and the increased reliance, availability, and affordability of rapid tests. In addition, many financial variables remain unknown. As, as the, as the chief pointed out in his submission form, federal funding may be extended. I don't know where that landed, or if that, anything's happened there. And there was also discussion of potentially charging individuals a convenience fee to offset the cost to the town. The tests are around $45, so there's a potential to charge people for these tests that obviously would affect the amount of funding required. We believe pursuing a strategy to cover the cost of PCR testing using a combination of federal funds and convenience fees would be preferred if we wanted to continue that. And, you know, we did have a discussion about using ARPA funds to support and making tests available to individuals who are unable or unable to afford or obtain a test. But this would be a much narrower target than the current testing provides. And my understanding is there's an ample supply of rapid tests, both through the, the Board of Health and to individuals. So those were the, those were, that's a summary of our recommendations that are reflected in the handout. As you know, the Select Board has final approval of ARPA funds, so, you know, we would, we would welcome you taking a vote on these in support or having deliberations on these. There were two other areas I do want to just mention, maybe after we address these, that are areas of interest to the committee that we'd like to get your initial thoughts on.
So I was just going to suggest, maybe we can with the, unless someone in, on the board wants to discuss further the Wilkins HVAC and the Carlisle Cultural Council Grant, we could, did you want to discuss one of those?
I am so sorry, can I ask a question?
Please, yeah.
All right, because I'm new to this, and I just want to understand fully. So I looked at this in ARPA, and maybe, and thanks for all your work on this, because we've obviously thought about it extensively, and that's great, you and Kate. But I, no, really, but I don't understand is, so ARPA, and then how that ties into you, you'd sent us information on the SR, SLFRF
State and local fiscal recovery funds.
Is that kind of like
It is ARPA.
It is ARPA.
That's the, ARPA is the common vernacular to refer to the state and local fiscal recovery funds. It is one and the same.
Because their key principle is recipients and sub-receptors are the first line of defense responsible for ensuring that the SLRFP, whatever, award funds are not used for ineligible purposes. They're after no fraud, stuff like that. So then you go to the statutory eligibility uses, and it's all about COVID-19 and everything. So all these things have been kind of vetted through that, is that
Well, so the, the difference is, and this is Carlisle, in, in the, in the previous meeting, elected to designate the entirety of our amount as revenue loss. So in addition to the eligibility criteria, the government also said to, to towns and localities that up to $10 million, you can designate ARPA funds as revenue loss. And when you do that, the eligibility requirements go away essentially, and you can use those ARPA funds for any quote-unquote "government service." So these projects need not line up with the ARPA-eligible products, because we are not, we are not funding projects under that mechanism. We are, we have designated it all as revenue loss, which means we can use it for any quote-unquote "government service." And so the processes that we've put in place in terms of our evaluation, working with the town accountant, working with TMS to ensure that, A, and all of these things do qualify as a government service, and that both the definition, the approval, the invoicing, the payment are all appropriate and comply with both ARPA and audit guidelines.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, yes, it's very confusing.
You've done a great job.
If I may, this is a great job. And one request that I have is, could you add to this kind of where we are with the funds?
Yes.
So that we know that when, when we're agreeing to something, we know kind of where that puts us.
So
So where are we now?
So where are we now? So we were awarded a total of $1.57 million is our expected total ARPA funding. We've received half of that. We received an email today that we just completed the paperwork to start receiving the second half of that imminently. So we should receive another $275,000 in the next few weeks, and we should receive the balance in the next few months. So we have half the money, we should have the entirety of the money by end of September.
And we've spent nothing so far.
We've spent, well, we've, we've approved $329,000, and we've spent, actual invoiced and spent about $19,000 of that $329,000.
$329,000, okay.
And if, if, and I have these numbers, I didn't have time to put them in the packet, but if we, if you approve the recommended projects, that would total an additional $255,508, which would bring the total approved funds to $584,755, which leaves $985,245 left, which is about 63% of the total.
Okay, thank you, Ben.
And I would, and what I would add to that is that there are certainly unknowns and risks related to the pandemic and unexpected costs. And we definitely want to keep a lot of, I think the committee is, is being very judicious in how we recommend these projects and making sure we're not, as a lot of localities are, spending it all upfront, and we keep a lot of dry powder, so to speak, for the next two fiscal years.
Yeah. So are we, perhaps it might make sense to have a motion on the floor then to accept the three that are recommended, and then we can come back and discuss any one of those, once we have a motion on the floor?
Could I also request in the motion that you just make approval contingent on compliance of the federal procurement guidelines? Thank you.
And move that we approve the recommended project, ARPA projects as presented tonight, contingent upon there being
Compliance with
With
Federal procurement.
Procurement guidelines.
Second.
So any discussion about any of these three?
Did I, did I, did I say that right? It's the ones that you're proposing, not all the ones on the paper.
The town meeting electronic voting system, the Wilkins HVAC project, and the Carlisle Cultural Council grant.
Yes. I want to make sure we weren't all of a sudden approving them all.
Right. All right, well, hearing no discussion, we can do this as a voice vote. All in the, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the three projects have been approved unanimously.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
And thank you, really. Yes, I know you have a few of the things you want to raise, right?
I was hoping it's, very quickly, two more areas of interest that we want to come back to you and discuss potentially next month. One is, and Kate's kind of been championing the idea of funding, using ARPA funds to fund a grant consultant for the next two years. When we talk to these groups, our first question is always, are there other funding sources and other grants available before we use ARPA funds? And in most cases, you know, they, they don't have the resources to do comprehensive grant outreach. And so the thinking is, if, if we use some ARPA funds to fund a grant consultant, we could get a multiple, multiple X return on that investment. And typically, I, you know, I think we're trying to find where this lived in the transition with town administrator and all this. Kate has done some initial research on what that might cost. And if, if it's an area of interest for the Select Board as well, what we would do is push the ball further in the next month to put some more specifics around it, and then come back with an actual proposal to you.
But it's on the order of
I'll yield the floor.
A halftime person who would be available to help any local group that might be considering a project but looking for funds, looking for, help them find other grant funds.
Right.
Does that include the town itself?
Yes. That's what I'm wondering, okay.
And they could also look for a grant to pay for themselves.
Yes.
I mean, a rule of thumb is that grant writers bring in four times their salary.
And I'm very conscientious of these grant-funded positions becoming permanent positions, and this was, this is an example of that in the past. So again, I think we would have a very specific term on this. And, and we'd want to really see what the fruits of the labor are.
Right.
And this may, this, this requirement may change based on the incoming town administrator and assistant town administrator.
Right.
But there's a gap there. If that's an area of interest, we will do more due diligence on this through our committee in the next month. But we didn't want to move too far without some feedback from the Select Board. The second area is where we, we would express support is in funding some town hall technology upgrades, specifically, you know, using some ARPA funds to upgrade the teleconference and remote meeting equipment in the other conference rooms. I know PEG money is being used to, to make some changes in here, but, you know, I don't see remote meetings going away anytime soon and we would support use of that. I think the challenge is just getting the request and that list of the recommended equipment in so that we, we could actually make the purchase and install it. And currently, there's not a home for that. So I volunteered to spend some additional time working on that with whomever and, and potentially the school to identify some basic equipment that we could get into the conference rooms. And that would maybe be on the order of 10K, maybe? I don't think it would be.
To the field and the other little man or what?
Yeah, upstairs.
Yeah.
Two, two conference rooms, maybe? And I don't, I don't know, there might be other little quick.
You know, laptops to go with them.
It's not a lot of money, but right now there's just no, and if there is a resource that has, has an idea of what that should be, we would love to see that request. It just hasn't been brought to us.
One, the, yeah, great.
The one we're getting here, I mean, one of the things we have at work now, because everybody, obviously they're all upgrading their technology is is smarter about, and I'm looking at that picture right now, homing in on the speaker.
Yeah.
Is that what this one will do? Okay.
Yeah, so we've gone through Minuteman.
Yeah.
With the whole this for them for this room.
But these other.
Right.
Yeah, I. And I'd, as a committee member, I'd like to get to a point where like even on FinCom, we can get back to like hybrid meetings. And right now it's me logging my laptop in and the webcam. And even like more Zoom licenses for committee members so that they can host Zooms, things like that. I mean, it's low hanging fruit, it's not expensive, but some work is required and we just want to know that our committee would support funding in this area and we just need to push it, push it forward. So if you're, if you're willing to work on it, I'll just follow up with you after this meeting. But does this committee have a feeling on those two areas?
The pursuit of these two, because I certainly am. Are you comfortable with the pursuit of?
Yeah, we're not looking for any formal approvals, but we don't want to waste.
Explore it, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
We're not interested in funding this.
All right, so I think we're, we're good on that too.
You're good, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kate. Just trying to get out of here, right? Get the approvals and run. Yeah.
All right, thanks so much. So I, next on our agenda is the COVID testing. And so let me just point your attention to the packet where we included a memo from the Board of Health that they sent out on June 22nd. And as you know, we've had Chief Sorrow's here before to talk about this. And currently, the money that the federal government has allocated ends on June 30th, which is 30, which is Thursday. However, I spoke to Kelly actually just yesterday and she said, we don't have any answer yet on whether the federal government is going to continue to provide some kind of reimbursement. But what the, what she has been told is if they do continue, it would be, it would be a percentage, not 100%, but and she had mentioned that her regional contact had said potentially 90% of the cost. And she expected to hear back in two weeks. And again, as we know, that may or may not, you know, we may or may not get a definitive answer. But that's, that's the, what we know at the moment about federal funds being available. So if you, you know, if, have you all read the, the recommendation from the Board of Health? Because they are not recommending that we continue doing any kind of PCR testing. That, and they make the case about, you know, home tests being very available and that the, there are kits here, in fact, that one can receive from the Board of Health. And also through other municipal departments. So I won't go back over all of this. We all, I think, are paying enough attention to what's going on publicly that we have a sense of where things are in terms of the severity of when one does test positive for COVID, that the, the potential of, of ending up in the hospital with a figure, with a severe case has definitely dropped. But we continue to see people testing positive with milder symptoms. So that's the Board of Health's position. I chatted with Brian or we had some email back and forth about the possibility of having the testing still available here in Carlisle through the fire department, but charging those that wish to be tested, the cost of the test. And he and Kelly have talked about how that would work in terms of the finances here in town. And they have a, they have a plan for how that could work, which would mean taking checks or cash from people and then turning them in with any other receipts that were coming from the fire department. That money would go into the general fund. But the, the, the cost of the kits would be on the, in the fire department budget. Am I right about that, Brian? Am I saying that properly? Yeah, you want to come up, yeah, thanks and have a seat, yeah.
My understanding is that could happen either way, that we could fund it out of the general fund or out of the fire department. And then the FinCom could move money, you know, as we periodically can to say, well, you spent this much on this thing and we told you you could, so we're going to fund it.
If, if you need a different, additional funds within your budget. Yeah, okay. So that is an option that we could consider and we could consider that for a short period of time. Or we could decide to end the testing that we're offering after June 30th. Or we, or we could decide the town is prepared to spend, continue, spend the money on its own, or spend our own money, the town's budget, on continuing to offer the service. But you know, as Scott mentioned, we could, we wanted to figure out a way to reduce those who were eligible and that might, that might be challenging to do. But we could, we could take that as an approach. So the floor is open for.
So how would that work? So if I wanted to get a test and I went there and it was say $45, I could give you check or cash. If I didn't, if I, if I didn't have the funds to be able to do it, could you give me a free test?
An antigen test?
Yeah.
Yes, so I, I.
I don't, I don't leave, I can still get a test. And what do you think?
I think a lot of the momentum that we had for a long time is dissipating. Right now, if you have symptoms, it's, it's been a very expensive option to the society. But you can, you can get a PCR test pretty easily without symptoms. Like if you want to do it for travel, it's harder. If you want to do it to go to summer camp, it's harder. I mean, what you can, you can go to Minute Clinic and you see a doctor and you make an appointment, you see a doctor and you can get a test if you have symptoms. So that's kind of the, the hard part of making a criteria is you're, you're actually excluding the people for whom it's actually still the best, their best option. But like, like I say, I think, I think momentum is gone, you know, we've kind of announced that we're going to stop giving free tests. And I don't know if you follow City in the Woods, but you know, you had one, one strong plea. I think there's an extent to which people are so grateful that we did it for so long, they don't want to complain of, you know, about it, about it in the, but, but I also think there just isn't the strong need that there was.
You're, you're okay with this?
I'm okay with it, right, with, with us sending it. It's the reason I got a handful of tests so that exactly what you say, if somebody shows up, I can at least hand them something and.
Yeah, Scott, come on up to the mic, yeah.
Just want to chime in from a FinCom perspective. I mean, we can't just move funds between accounts. So if, just tactically, if it's being paid out of the fire department fund, we would have to either consider it an unexpected or unanticipated expense and do a reserve fund transfer. And I don't know if it meets that standard, I don't know. The other option would be you'd have to use town meeting to do account transfers. But really the FinCom, the only discretion we have without a town approval would be a reserve fund transfer.
You can't set up a revolving fund account.
No, not without a town meeting.
So we have one and we started to do that for, using the ambulance fund and we realized that's not smart.
So Scott, let me just ask a clarifying question then, because when I talked to Kelly, she said that the, the cost of adminis, the, the cost for the fire department and if we chose to absorb the cost of the actual test would come out of the operating budget of the fire department.
Yes.
And that then, and any, whatever revenue came in would go into the general fund.
Right.
So that, the, what, what then would happen is if at some point in the fiscal year, the fire department had used up their operating budget, that they would come to FinCom and Select Board for, I'm not.
Well, you'd have to do that at town meeting.
Couldn't, so you, FinCom cannot.
The only, the only.
Select Board can't.
We can't change, once, once the budget is approved, the only funds we can move are, is a reserve fund transfer. Yeah, 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 but you would have, you'd basically run in deficit or
Okay.
Until, until we got to town, now town meeting, you still have two months of the fiscal year, so you're not like, typically you're not going to, in so deficit that you're out of money and you adjust there. But we can't, I just want to be clear, we can't just like move.
Middle of the year, yeah. Okay, thanks for that. Yeah, and then we do also have our town meeting, I mean, I know we don't like to do financial stuff, but we do have one scheduled in October too. Okay, so that clarified for everybody? And so we have.
So I'm more on the point of when, when is it needed? You were saying, unfortunately, I.
If you have symptoms, as far as I know, insurance companies or, you know, you go to your doctor and they have a PCR test.
Right.
Everybody's happy with that. If you, if you, the problem comes when you want to, you know, go travel and then you need a PCR test to travel. Someplace, you know, summer camp wants a PCR test.
So those, they still require those tests?
They are still, at least they were, you know, we, we just did a whole series of them.
Right.
As summer camp's starting.
Right.
You would think that would, that would end sometime soon, but when you need those, there's not a really good option for doing it.
So I mean, could we just limit the reasons for which one would get a town test?
But typically what you would limit it to are the same, in other words, it would be people with symptoms and things like that.
No, I mean, sometimes you send them to the doctor.
See, the problem is though.
It's the people that are not sick that really.
No, it's the not sick people I'm talking about, the sick people, you tell them to go to the, wherever. And there's a reporting, I mean, what you're.
I think it's also just, is that a service that we're in, right? I mean, the idea behind these tests in the beginning was we needed to be able to detect it right away.
Right.
Are we in the service of providing PCR tests to prove that somebody doesn't have it?
No, it's more of a town, it's a service to the citizens.
And also there's the, you know, you, you know, do you really, you know, do we really want Brian staffing for the very occasional person who might come in for one of these things?
And, and I think there might be other costs that aren't, you know, necessarily just the cost of the test. There's going to be more time necessarily necessary to, you know, endorse the checks and, and, you know, keep, keeping and, you know, that's extra work.
A little bit, but I mean, we are in the, that's sort of a service. But if, if an individual needs a test to travel, say, isn't that like 100 bucks when you go to Circle Health or someplace?
And if you need one rapidly, it's going to be more than that.
Right, so, I mean, I, I don't feel strongly, but I mean, it would be a service. It would not be, it's not driven by health need, I agree with that. And I don't think we should be doing, if people feel like they have symptoms, they probably should be going to a healthcare professional anyway. But, you know, it is inconvenient to have to get tests when they're required. If we could narrow the criteria, I mean, people can always lie, but I don't think they would ask for tests unless they had a a real need, right? So.
How many positives have you had lately?
So within the last two weeks, very few, maybe three, four.
Out of how many tests?
I'd have to go back and look, but probably 60. So very, so we, we've been running like an 8% positive, I, I sent you the.
Nothing recent.
I sent somebody fairly recently, oh, maybe I sent the mosquito the percentages and it's, you know, in the 8% range since we started, which I think is pretty high. I mean, we had periods that were low and periods that were very high. And, and a month ago, we were in the, month and a half ago, we were in the 25% range of positives. We're down. Now, does that mean that everybody who's, who's had symptoms is just doing rapid test, antigen tests? I don't know.
If, Travis, you could, you could ramp back up quickly if things change dramatically in public health, something happened.
So that's the plan is to keep our ability to do it. And if somebody called us up, you know, we could, we could do that. The, the main reason I want to keep the ability is for public safety. So police and fire and dispatchers and EPW and people like that, that we have the ability to, because obviously if we have MTS going into your house and have COVID, that's a problem. One of my people needs a, needs a test, we get a test.
Continue it for town employees, right?
Absolutely, I think that, that's.
And I just absorb it, the cost of doing business.
And, and that's underpinned by, I mean, I get a mixed message from Board. Board of Health surprised me somewhat, given how conservative they've been in the statement that the antigen tests are as effective. I've heard always that they're effective when you are sick, it's good. They don't, they have low false positivity rate, but.
So if they're positive, if they come back positive, you're positive.
Right, but if it comes negative, you're right.
Yeah, you don't know. And so what they are, what they're claiming is if you take it over two days.
Right.
Two tests.
Two tests together, right.
That, that becomes pretty good. I think, I still think PCR tests finds, finds it a little more quickly.
Yeah, well, quicker than two days because you guys are pretty fast on that, right?
Well, I just mean in terms of, you know, if you do a PCR test, it may come positive when you do an antigen test, may come up negative. And then the next day when you do an antigen test, it may come up positive. In other words, PCR test is just a more.
Right, yeah, right. Okay, so you're doing now those tests still, so you're maintaining your capability and.
But we aren't going to staff it every day from 4 o'clock to 4:00.
Right, 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 right.
All right.
I would say, yeah, if you're keeping it for employees, I think they're picking him. If you're keeping it for employees, I think that's great, but if somebody shows up and they're clearly very sick, don't turn them away.
Yeah, well.
And, and we'll have a bunch of antigen tests and absolutely.
All right, so it sounds like we're.
I'm not good at saying no, everybody knows that.
Take that off the recording. All right, so it sounds like we're comfortable ending the service as a whole at, on Thursday as effective July 1 and that you will maintain your capability for those who emergent town hall employees.
Bring this up, but if I come up with a way to do it for free, you guys are okay with that?
Yeah. Yeah, as long as it doesn't.
I, I've, I've seen of an, an option, but I didn't like the turnaround time, I was just mailing it off. I don't.
What about if the legislation comes back with the 90%? Are we okay with that?
Well, why don't we revisit that?
Got it, okay, very good, thank you.
All right, we're all good?
Yep.
All righty, great.
I kind of, you, you saw me, I, I already kind of sent, told the mosquitoes, this is kind of what's happening. I think people wanted to know.
Yeah, shall we, do we, shall we make this a formal motion then?
Sure, why not?
Who wants to move that?
I wouldn't know what to say.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
All right.
Discontinue, yeah.
I move that we discontinue PCR testing at the fire department all, except for town employees on an emergency basis.
You could say we discontinue free testing.
Yeah, free testing, there you go. And we have the option of that for, except for, for town employees and as decided by the fire chief.
Effective July 1.
July, the, to end July 30th.
June 30th.
June 30th.
June 30th.
Second, I'll second that. All right, any more discussion?
At the end, you kind of made a weird wording, like you moved to end it effective June 30th.
July, effective July 1 will no longer provide that.
Okay. Got it, thank you.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Chief Sorrow's. And of course, thank you again for the tremendous, you and your, all of the folks at the fire department. We really appreciate it, it's been amazing resource. All right, we're going to try to catch up a little bit. Steve, I know you were. All right, we're going to try to catch up a little bit. Steve, I know you were going to do the full-time police officer.
I am playing the role of Chief Fisher tonight.
But may I, uh, let Lori, if you're okay with it, I'd like to let Lori Eckler, um, jump ahead to youth commission and come back to that if you're all right, and then Lori doesn't have to stay, although you may want to hear about our new full-time police officer. Leave, okay. So anyway, welcome Lori, Lori Eckler's the chair of the youth commission.
Thank you.
And, um, we're glad to have you, and we wanted to just get an update from you on, I know COVID has put a real wrench into things with the youth commission, but where you are and what you're thinking about going forward, and also the membership.
So I thought it was a good idea for everyone, to have everyone on the same page and just give you an overview of what the youth commission is, from my understanding and what we were mandated with. So it's a town committee made up of about five to eight Carlisle parents with middle school age children typically. Um, the primary goal is to provide a safe, all-inclusive and fun monthly event for Carlisle middle school residents, regardless of where they go to school. So it could be Carlisle public school kids, but they could go to school elsewhere and attend as well. Uh, they have been, these monthly events have become known as Friday Night Live, um, they usually happen on the first Friday of the month. Oftentimes not starting until September, I mean, till October, giving your, everybody time to get settled in. Typically, they hold them in the gym with a sort of an open gym event, and then in the auxiliary gym with, uh, sometimes a DJ, sometimes a movie. Um, we mix it up during the year, we do Halloween events, we do a dodgeball tournament in the winter. It's for students in grades six to eight, but for the dodgeball tournament, we allow the fifth graders to get a little taste of Friday Night Live and participate in the dodgeball. What else? They, so in order to put this on, you know, it does take a team of parents, but we also ask that if your child is going to participate, that you chaperone one event during the year. That, that is often a challenge to get parents to chaperone. Um, and it also does take a certain type of parent to be on the, the youth commission. I would say a parent with a good temperament who likes teenage kids is really helpful. Um, so we sort of hand select who, who is a good fit for the role. And so in order to have it, we reserve the space for the school, this is not a school sanctioned event, so we reserve the gym space for the school, um, business manager. And then the other thing we need is one person needs to be certified as a crowd control manager, which has been me for a long time. Um, I think going forward, we'll have at least two people, because if it's just me, then I have to be at every Friday Night Live without. And now that I don't have any more middle school children, I probably will not be going to Friday Night Live anymore. So the plan is for me to stay on, um, I'm on until two thousand twenty-three. Um, that's my term, but I agreed to go in the fall and do a few of them, at least one or two, to get people who are new to the committee uh, familiar with the process, running them, do the training, um, and we do a one-night training with the parents and the kids as to setting expectations, behavior, what you can bring, what you can do, and, um, and then probably step away. And we have a number of people who are interested in staying on, and then we have a couple of new members who are interested in joining, um, the group. I think the term lasts three years, we get sworn in as a, you know, and, um, so the other thing you need, so you have to be a crowd manager, and then you have to pull a permit with the fire department, um, prior to every Friday Night Live, um, a standard permit for safety. And then we fill the permit out and we keep those permits on record, um, just to keep it safe. That's kind of it, and then we pay, so the town funds, typically what the town pays for is the custodian, which for the last time we had, uh, Friday Night Live was, I, I look back, I think it was February of two thousand twenty, because I think we had the, we had the March twenty-twenty scheduled, and I think we had to pull the plug at the last minute, because that's when everything, um, went south. So, um, back then, it was about a hundred and eighty-five dollars for the custodian, um, and it was about three hundred dollars for the quote, Friday Night Live manager that we hired, which was a special ed, um, instructor from Beverly that's been doing it for years, well, that's who would come with all the gym equipment and he kind of knew the routine and he would, he would buy all the snacks first in advance, and, um, so the town paid for him and paid for the, um, custodian. That was a bit, so that totals about forty-five hundred dollars a year, I'm sure the price for the custodian has probably increased since that time, I'm not exactly sure. Um, and then, uh, back in the day, there used to be a DJ that we paid for, that was not inexpensive. And what happened is attendance started to wane, um, so we, we started mixing up the DJ, not doing DJ every time, because it became really expensive to have the DJ, if there were only, you know, fifteen kids there. So I'm hoping, uh, the kids are really in need of a social event, so I'm hoping that in the fall, if we start these up again, they'll become much more popular, and we'll have good attendance. It'll be new again, right? And we haven't, I think people have asked for it, and I think that the feeling was it wasn't safe, and we did not want to be the super spur event at the school, we thought it was most important to keep the kids in school, you know, we had checked in with Linda from time to time. And, uh, the decision was that it wasn't really a good idea to have Friday Night Live. And so a couple of times during the year, we sort of toyed around with the idea, and then something would happen, and we're like, oh, probably not a good idea, so. Um, but I think we're game to kick it off again in, um, October.
I'm like six years away from, from it, I don't remember, like, so.
You weren't, what, you were on the youth commission at one point?
No, I was not, no.
Okay.
Um, I was a chaperone at.
You were a chaperone, okay.
Um, but, um, so the stacks, or is it, is there charge for the stacks?
So we usually charge somewhere, it depends, so what we charge depends on, um, what the activity is, so I think we were, we're at five dollars, and then maybe we went to ten dollars when the kid, when the attendance started to wane, and we needed to pay for the DJ. I think the last one we did, we went back down to five, but usually that money pays for, it kicks in towards the DJ and it covers the cost of the snacks.
Back into the revolving fund?
It does, it, there's, I mean, I think we spent, I think there's like a kitty of like two hundred and seventy-five dollars or something that's sitting in a cash box that's left over from the snacks of the last time we had it, that hasn't been spent.
But we do allocate four thousand in the town budget every year.
Right.
Right, to cover the.
I don't know what, I, I honestly do not know what you allocate every year.
Cash not go back to the town and.
Cash does.
Money just stays in a.
It stays in a cash, like a cash box, because there's never that much cash, that's what's happened, right?
We did have a memo from, uh, Kelly.
Right.
Saying that the revolving fund has a current balance of ten thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents.
Okay.
That's not in the cash box.
That's not in the cash box. That is not in the cash box.
Right.
Usually what we do is out of the cash box, Mike, the, the manager, assuming he is going forward, we, we, he gives us a receipt and we give him, you know,
Be reimbursed.
Two hundred dollars for the snacks for that night or something.
General fund budget was voted at four thousand fifteen dollars, and last year's expenses were paid from that line. And, and the last year that expenses were paid from that line, sorry, was in the fiscal twenty.
Right, and there were probably two months that were paid from that.
There's also expenses being paid from the cash box.
So from the cash box, it's, it's snacks, seltzer and junk food.
I also, yeah, chaperoned, excuse me, I remember collecting money for the snacks.
Yeah, that's what.
We, we'd sit first at the, at, at the door, collect money when the kids came in, and then later we would go, transfer ourselves to the snack.
Yeah, pizza, wasn't there pizza stuff?
And pizza, right, there's pizza too, yep.
Yeah.
Pizza, sometimes they pay a dollar a slice for the pizza, yeah, yeah.
A quarter for a glass of.
Yeah, seltzer, I, I did away with the soda, I was the bad guy that made seltzer instead of soda.
So, um, so you said that you, um, have some people in mind to join the commission?
So there's some people that are still on, that are, uh, their term ends in two thousand twenty-two.
Right, and they, we have them.
So most of them have agreed to renew, I think everyone's agreed to renew.
And have you told anyone at town hall about that? Because we have them on our, we have the appointments actually on our agenda tonight, and I think what we have is that nobody other than yourself is continuing on the youth commission.
So I don't think that.
That, we don't know the latest, I guess.
So everyone, I think everyone you have listed, Katie Ardet, Stephanie Keen, Kathy McDonald, Amy Smack, and myself, I think that's the five people, right? No, I don't think he is continuing.
Okay.
His youngest just dropped.
Yeah, his youngest just graduated, yeah. Um, and so they would be sworn back in, assuming they were approved, so we've never presented, we've never done this before, so we've always just, every time the term's up, we go, we meet with the town clerk, she swears herself in again, and we just move forward.
Right, so we're, yeah, we're trying to do a little better on.
I think that's good, yeah.
So, um, typically, we, here, we, Jen put something out on, if you got anything from Jen Gibbons, to each of the chairs, asking about who was listed and who was planning to continue.
Never got anything.
Okay.
Um, I also have a note on, on youth commission that, um, there's no stagger among the, everybody's.
Staggered terms.
No staggered terms, so.
Right.
It might be that, uh, this coming time, you know, you might have two people with one-year term, two with a two-year term, and two with a three-year term, so that you don't have everybody going off all at once.
Exactly, I think that's really important.
The kids with the, the parents with the younger kids should get the longer term.
Longer term, exactly, you know, it helps to bring people in when they're sixth graders, and then.
Right.
Because a lot, not, not all these people, but some will be coming off next year, so.
Yeah, so, um, do you have openings on the commission? It sounds like you might have one, right?
We might have one opening, but I did put it out there to the other members to, if, it, I will say it does help to have a male, female
Mm-hmm.
uh, mix, and right now we have all female, but in the past, we've had, um, a mix, and I think it helps to have a mix.
Yeah.
Especially if something goes awry, even though that doesn't really happen, but just in case, yeah.
So I, um, we, I think, I, we haven't really ever talked about how positions get filled, um, sort of in a, sort of any process for that, but if a member of the general public approaches you or, or would like to be considered for a position, uh, how do you handle that? I mean, not the general public, but let's put it this way, a parent, a parent of a, of kids that are in the school, uh, it's not somebody that you had thought about asking, right, but they reach out to you and want to be part of the, uh, commission.
Usually we're asking, we're begging people to join the commission, so I don't think we've had that experience, so I'm not sure how I would react, and I don't know how I should react.
Because I think we, right, we would encourage anyone who volunteers to be considered.
It's a little bit harder here, just some comments about the website, but, um, they would either contact you or they would contact us and say, hey, we'd like to be on that board. If we get it, we should send it to the chair and say, what do you think? You should talk to the person.
Yeah, I mean, they have to be corried, there's a process.
And then you would recommend.
To us, that we appoint them.
Right, I think first they get corried, and then.
No, typically you'd wait and do that after we appoint them, yeah, because it, well, if you don't, if, if you don't send them forward, then there's no point in having them be corried, right, and then you, I typically, you'd wait till after they were appointed, yeah, and then could do that. Um, so.
You know that there's people, have people approached you that wanted to join?
I, I heard from one person, which I can pass on to you, um, right, this was a while ago, probably ten months ago, when maybe there was some idea that maybe we'd restart again. So, um, yeah, I can pass it on to you later. And then the other thing that, um, what about, so do you have formal meetings or no?
So typically, we meet maybe once a year formally.
Okay.
Usually that's the night we're sworn in, and we might have a meeting to plan for the year, and other than that, we, it's sort of, you know.
Yeah.
Couple phone calls, this is going to be dodgeball night, this is going to be, we, we sort of set the schedule in advance usually, and then, um, who's hanging the poster at the school, who's, you know, who's.
Right, divvy up assignments.
Who can come, and then we have a sign-up genius for chaperones.
Yeah.
So usually, historically, the, you know, I'd say the majority of the youth commission shows up on the night of Friday Night Live, um, and they are part of the chaperones, and then we recruit, you know, depending on what we think the numbers are going to look like, we recruit additional chaperones with a sign-up genius.
Yeah.
And typically, it's as.
Yeah, I would.
The same people every time that come, yeah.
I don't think you need to have a lot of meetings, but I, I would recommend you appoint a treasurer.
Yep, we've had a treasurer in the past.
Paper trail that you submit, so the processes.
So you can see the whole, yep.
And also, then have them know what funds we have available here in town, too.
Yeah, that's.
Right, um.
So I will say, um, at one point in the past, we, I went to the, I'm not sure how it got approved, but I think I went to, um, Priscilla Dumpka, and I asked, and she must have come to you and got permission, or she came to the select board at the time and got permission, and we brought in the speaker. It would be nice to do, you know, if there's that much money, I don't know if, what's going to happen to that amount of money, if it's going to roll over, or if it's going to get spent down, and we'll get four thousand dollars for next year, but, um, I think to bring in some speakers from time to time, I mean, we brought in.
The FNL, or at separate?
Well, we did it at a separate event, we brought in a woman that was on internet safety and sort of building awareness with the kids about the perils of social media.
Yeah, Steve.
We, we just, we just learned today that, um, you know, the attorney general had filed suit against all these opioid manufacturers, and we're getting twelve thousand one forty-four from that settlement this year, then like six or seven thousand every year for the next four or five years, so you know, I, I, I did talk to the board of health, but I'm thinking between maybe you guys and the board of health, we could do some educational programming, speakers, as you say, there's this one former basketball player, Chris, Chris Heron, yeah.
We've had him come before.
Yeah.
Um, to Concord, I think he came, he was great. There's also another woman who wrote a book called, The Addiction Inoculation, and the, kind of her parent and teachers had her come and speak a couple of weeks ago, she was amazing, and I thought, oh, if we could get her to come and afford her.
Yeah.
And maybe it's something where we kick in and Concord kicks in, and we can co-sponsor something.
Yeah, and I, I suggested to, to Linda that, you know, maybe we can run programs or do programs, you know, regionally with others, because we're, every, every city in town is getting, getting this funds from the settlement.
That's great to know, so I think I would be very supportive of doing that.
Yeah.
I think there's a lot of things like that would benefit our kids, middle school kids, before they go off to high school, so.
So that would be, when you do have your first meeting, I mean, that would be, this charter's kind of old and limited, so.
It's a very, my understanding was a very specific charter, and that's why I came, and I said, could we do a speaker and.
Right, so you could, what would be the process? If they meet, and they have a discussion, and they wish to broaden their charter, then they come back to us?
Yeah, you could draft something and bring it back, yeah.
I mean, it would be good, I think that is, I, I think it's very good, you know, to bring these things in, and the coordination, again, just my recommendation, because the school does things, you know, there's lots of other pieces of activities that the kids here have that, you know, some coordination with the other groups that might be doing that.
Well, I think when she came, I can't think of her name, when she came, the, the internet woman.
Yeah.
We did it in such a way that she presented at school, I think to the, we did like a dual thing with the school, that the school benefited, and then.
Yeah, good. Right.
FNL benefited. But I think if we brought in our charter, I mean, the kids are in dire, dire need of social events, and there's no, the school no longer does any dances, but you see, um, the lack of those opportunities for social interaction, how it affects the behavior.
No longer.
They don't have any time to practice, right, social skills.
Yeah.
So I think it's important, Friday Night Live, I mean, the last time I remember being really robust was when my now rising college junior was an eighth grader.
Yeah.
Probably there.
You might have been.
So, I, I just have a couple of things, um, you know, one, I think, you know, if, if you want to do the speakers thing and everything, I think we, we do need to change the charter, because it's very specific, Friday Night Live right now.
Right.
Um, and the other thing that I noticed is there's no contact information here at all, so if anybody was interested in reaching out to anybody, there's, there's no way of contacting anybody on the commission, I'm looking at the website, um, so maybe we could add that.
Okay. I thought there was, because I thought you, the way that, because you have to register for Friday Night Live, and I thought, yeah, okay. I thought there was a way for the registration.
Might be dealing with all this, too.
So, um, and then just the other thing, that's just, you know, you know, particularly since you're, you're dealing with funds and everything, I think you really need to do, need to post agendas and do minutes.
Yeah.
You're going to have, you should have a treasurer, and you, you're, you're dealing with town funds, that town is, so, so if anybody's wondering what's going on, they should be able to come here and say, oh, when's the next meeting, and then see what was discussed in the other one, I think it's the law.
Do you think we should meet more regularly than once a year?
I think that what you should do is in the new charter, you should specify how often you're going to meet, and, and, you know, it doesn't mean you can't move it, but, you know, I, I would set the cadence.
I agree. I think a minimum, Lori, of twice, beginning and end, because you really want to recap, especially if you're going to, you know, change things, right? I mean, that, what's been happening is, is before COVID, you were doing the same thing over and over, so it was pretty routinized, and you didn't really, people knew what they had to do, and they just did it.
Right.
And nobody wants meetings just to have meetings, but I think Nathan's absolutely right, you're custodian of town funds, and people need, you know, people should know, there should be clarity, so.
And they, website's easy to update, Jen can help you with that.
Yeah, do you know Jen Gibbons, the assistant to the select board?
But I.
But she's great.
Absolutely, yeah, figure out how we update it.
Yeah.
It's behind the scenes, there are some, through the rec, kids register through the rec, and there's a whole website there with contact information, so I don't know how exactly that's linked, but it is linked somewhere that people. but it is linked somewhere that people can find it, contact information.
You mean, but do people register for FNL through the rec?
So you have to register, well, it's, it's through the rec website, but it's, it's a separate link on their website where they register, so you have to register to attend.
So you could add that link also to the youth commission website.
The town website, yeah.
I thought it used to be there, maybe it's not there anymore, but it used to be linked through there because.
There's a PDA about Friday Night Live.
So maybe it's, it's somewhere, somewhere in there, there's a link somewhere, it's not easy to find probably.
Well, it gets pushed to the middle school parents when you have the event, right? That's typically.
It gets pushed, but there's also, I know, because when I go in to, to change the, to update the, the link, I sometimes access it through the town website, so can I tell you exactly how I do it? No, and then I log into this special place and I update that information.
Child, if you click there, there's a link.
Okay.
And how do you, you mentioned that, uh, FNL is open to the kids who are not attending, the middle school aged kids.
How do we vet them?
No, well, that is another question, but how do you promote it outside that channel that?
So we put it in the, so I think it goes into, I think I wrote it here and I can't remember all the places. I think it goes into the buzz, it goes into the newspaper, it goes on to the
Okay, so other, other.
We put it in as many places we can think as possible, I don't know that we actually send it to the private schools, but I think it's in, being in the newspaper, people get it, and then they sign their kids up, and then that gives us all the medical information, so if there's an allergy, we have, and we print that out for every Friday Night Live as part of our checklist, so we know it, you know, if somebody takes a basketball to the face, that we have their information right, readily available, so we can call the parent and say, your kid has a bloody nose, you might want to come get them.
What'd you say?
And a detachment.
That hasn't happened, don't curse.
Hope not, um, well, let's, um, I think this is great, it's been a good discussion, and we really appreciate you coming in to talk with us, and, um, we want to be supportive.
Thank you.
We think the youth commission has a lot to offer.
I'm really, I'm hoping we can do it again next fall, because it was, it is a great, great event, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for sponsoring.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, thank you, Lori. Alrighty, um, so let's go back to, um, the appointment of the full-time police officer.
Yes, I'm playing the role of Chief Fisher, um, he was on vacation. So, uh, you may, uh, recall that in the upcoming budget, the FY23 budget, a 12th police officer was approved at town meeting. Uh, the chief has interviewed and is recommending, um, Richard Glenn, Glenn of Drakot. Richard, uh, currently, uh, well, he's a graduate of Merrimack College, both in criminology as a, as a major and a master's degree in criminology, and is, uh, currently a, a member of the Merrimack College Police Department. Has a great background, um, you may recall that one of the reasons we are pursuing the 12th officer is, is the fact that it will help cut down on, on some overtime, uh, based on, you know, sickly vacation, injured on duty, that type of thing. So I would recommend the appointment of Richard Glenn as a Carlisle Police Officer, subject to, uh, passing, uh, uh, the appropriate academy and, and physicals and things like that.
May I have a motion? Did we have one in the packet?
We have one, yes.
I move that the select board approved the recommendation of the police chief to appoint, well, and in this case, the police chief and our interim, um, town administrator to appoint Richard A. Glenn of Drakot to serve as a full-time police officer for the Carlisle Police Department, subject to successful completion of a background investigation.
May I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
I think this would be the first time we had appointed a full-time police officer without beating them.
Yeah, I, I thought he was going to be here this evening, I don't know, unless he's, unless he's zooming in, which I don't think he is.
Yeah.
Would be the first time we.
I mean, I.
That's true.
Without actually meeting.
I mean, I asked the chief to make him aware, so I don't, I don't know why he's not here.
Hmm.
Or we can.
Should we hold off?
Wait two more weeks.
Till July 12?
The chief will be back.
I hate that. Stick in the wheel, but it would be the first time we, that I can recall of not meeting somebody that we were hiring.
That's true for all town employees, or what's the standard?
No, I think that, um, anybody that we're, that we're approving the appointment of, yes, we have, and even part-time, I think we have. I don't know, that's just what.
We haven't hired any part-time police officers for a while, but certainly the full-time.
Actually, part-time's, I think we have, it's been off the list.
And to Travis's other question, yes, if it's another department.
If, if we're charged with approving it, then we see them.
Accounting, accountant, we met with.
Right, finance department director, yeah.
Um, fire department, we don't, because he's on his own.
Brian, yeah, you want to come up to the mic?
One question, and that is, um, I, I don't know that I answered this, yeah, can, can they do the other parts of it? You said some.
Background check, tobacco.
Oh, can they do all those things?
I don't see why not, I don't see why not.
All those things, I know on our end, that those things take a lot of time.
Right.
And that, as long as they can do those things, then it may not affect them.
I, I, I don't, I don't see why not, I mean, I just, what I, what I don't know, since John's on vacation, is, you know, how quickly that background check would take and when he'd be working this person into the shifts, but.
That would be the same whether we approved.
Right, exactly.
He was asked to be here, right?
I asked John to ask him, but I don't know if I got carried on or not, because right before John left, he was involved with that, uh, search of the little boy in, in Lowell that was out multi-days, so, um, I don't know, I just don't know.
Send the message, right?
So, um.
So there was a motion, but it's not been seconded, so.
It was seconded, yeah.
Discussion.
Okay, yeah, we're in the discussion phase. So it sounds like we're, I, I think I would certainly be more comfortable if we have a chance to meet him, and if we think it's reasonable to, um, approve that, uh, the police chief, do the background investigation, uh, we could approve that going forward, and then, uh, have the, at our July 12th meeting, meet the officer and consider approval then.
Yeah, however, if we vote on this motion and I can make another one.
Yeah, I think that's a better, yeah, let's, we need to dispose of this motion at this point.
So, um, let's vote on the motion that was put on the floor by Nathan to recommend.
I put it on the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, put on the floor by Kate, um, to appoint Richard Glenn. All those in favor?
Wait a minute, I'm confused.
Okay, we're going to vote on this first motion.
Just withdraw the motion, don't do that, don't do that. Withdraw the motion, don't vote against it, right?
Well, all right, so Kate, do you want to withdraw the motion?
Motion.
Okay.
And, okay.
Well, you just withdraw.
I'll second that, the withdrawal, if we do that.
We don't have to vote on withdrawal, it's just.
It's just a withdrawal?
Yeah.
Okay, I move that the select board, uh, approve, um, the chief of police moving forward with, uh, the completion of background investigation and any other, um, items needed, um, for Richard A. Glenn of Drakot in request that we, um, be able to meet with, uh, Mr. Glenn at our next meeting prior to approving the appointment.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. All right, then let's, uh, move on to the, um, annual appointments and liaison assignments. So let's take those separately, uh, in your packet, you have the, uh, all right, you have the public officials, and we did those at the last meeting. So then you drop down to where it says town boards and committees. And Kate, you had a couple of things you wanted to mention about this?
Several.
Okay.
Um, things, uh, first of all, um, on the Affordable Housing Trust, it's not for three-year and three-two-year appointments, they're all two-year appointments going forward, because that's the max appointment that can be done. Um, what we had done was we had done for two-year and three-one-year, so that we would have a staggered, um, reappointment schedule. So it should, uh, um, they should all be two-year appointments with a four and a three stagger.
Okay.
Okay?
And does the, um, term, the, the, what's here now, the new expiration?
So.
So you and Kate going, you and, uh, Mark going for two years, and then everyone else, uh, their term ending next year, is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay, great, so we can change the heading later, but.
Right.
That, what's listed here is accurate, okay?
And I would really love, this, the one that says vacant two-year is really a, um, sorry, a, and there's a vacant two-year and a vacant, we should get rid of that two-year, because it, yes, it's two years. But the, the second vacant one is really the end of somebody's term who left, who, uh, was uh, going, who moved to a different town. An unexpired term, right, and I would love for another select board member to, to volunteer for either of those two vacancies, but I'm suggesting the, the one-year term, just to get their feet wet, um, because we have to have a minimum of one select board member on the trust. I am up for reelection next year, I may or may not run. If I do run, I may or may not get elected, so there will be definitely a vacancy there and in, for succession and for continuity, I think it would be nice if we have somebody from the select board fill, um, one of those slots and, you know, if it makes it less scary to fill just a one-year slot, and say, fill the one-year slot. Mind being there two years, pick the two-year slot.
So, well, um, can we come back to that question?
Okay. Um, on community preservation committee, um, again, um, there are three-year slots, they're filled by, they're, they're not appointed by us, really, they're, they're appointed by their own boards.
Right.
Um, and the slots really belong to the boards, um, and I'm just wondering if they shouldn't also be staggered? But I don't, I don't know how you deal with that. I think it's awkward that there's a three-year, um, term for something that's filled from other boards, and they, you know, some of them are elected boards and some of them, is there any, the?
Rec com.
Rec com and, and historic are not elected.
Right.
Uh, so I don't know, i- it's just something I think we should think of, about going forward. And the Barney Arnold one should be for 2023 and not for 2025.
Because that's.
Because that's the, again, the end of the unexpired term of looks.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, on cultural council, again, it's a matter of staggering the staggered one, three, and one, and maybe we should readjust those to two, two, and, and one. And again, for municipal facilities committee, should be one, two, and two stagger, and right now they're not. And.
Let me just ask a quick question here, so wouldn't we need to do these corrections on the charters for these committees?
No, I think what happens is somebody drops off, then somebody new comes in, and rather than doing the unexpired term, we've just kind of been, it's, we haven't been careful about putting in.
Continuing with the staggering.
Staggering, and so a lot of the staggers are kind of cattywampus. Um, but anyway, that's something we can.
It's also not clear from some of these which, like, looking at MFC, you've got Carrie, who's a school committee rep.
Right.
And everybody else is just like at large, I mean, it's not, I wish it was, it's got to be more clearly laid out, like, this, these ones are reps from, where committees appoint reps, and these are at large, and.
I went back and reread the municipal facilities committee, and there's no requirement for anybody to be a rep from anywhere.
Right, so Carrie is as Carrie, not as school committee rep, is that what you're saying?
She is a school committee rep.
She was elected as a school committee rep because we had had one historically, but not in the charter. We had decided to reach out and ask them.
Right.
Right, and historically, there's also been a select board rep. Um, and the reason that it was important, I think, when, um, Christine Lear was no longer the school committee rep, she just kind of dropped into a, um, a regular.
At large.
At-large member, um, and the reason we really wanted to keep the school committee rep beyond the fact that there was one historically, is because we were trying to regionalize the school and, and town.
Maintenance.
Maintenance departments, so we thought it was really important to keep somebody from school on the committee, so. Um, that was, you know, again, it's, it's not horrible, but it does have a, you know, it got a bad, the stagger's not great.
And this has, for instance, you, Kate, and Christine, your terms are expiring at the end of this year, at the end of June, but it doesn't indicate that you've.
Which one are you looking at?
I'm looking at mu- municipal facilities, sorry.
I don't see Kate on there.
No, I'm the vacant.
Kate is the second one under municipal facilities.
Right, and Steve Hinton is taking Christine Lear's slot.
Okay, but that's not reflected here, okay. But I do see, see Steve, is there, uh, was there an appointment? Is, did I see his name coming up?
It's with today.
Steve LeDoux for an appointment further down? Uh, God, I thought I just saw that. Is that what he's getting, no, I thought I just saw an appointment, um.
He wrote a, a letter.
Was it a letter of interest?
Yes.
Yeah.
Let, he.
I thought I just saw that when I reviewed this.
He wrote a letter of interest for the municipal facilities committee.
Yeah, that's what I thought I saw, but I don't think it's in here, I must have seen it somewhere else, okay. So we, we may, we may have to hold on a couple of these, where there's these questions about who's actually on it. Um, I guess the problem is if they want to meet, right, between now and July 12th.
Which, which ones are we?
I don't understand what the question is about.
Well, municipal facilities, so this is not listed correctly, but so Kate, you are going off, is that what you're saying?
It is listed correctly.
It, well, it says 2022, nor.
The old one.
Oh, whoa, 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 okay, sorry.
Well, that helps.
All right, and then it's got, uh, Steve.
Steve Hinton would be the new appointment.
Okay, okay, thank you, but see, it doesn't have, so you're.
Mine is vacant.
Now listed as vacant, okay, all right.
Okay.
It should have a reference, I, it would be helpful, this is the third time poor Jen has to do it, but I think there should be a reference column or a notes column, because it's very confusing.
Okay, well.
What would be in there?
Well, like, so-and-so took over from Christine Lear, or is, I mean, we have no tieback to, it's like, but anyway.
Well, okay.
Um, personnel board, are we appointing personnel board? Because nobody's been meeting.
How we struck that from our list?
Well, it's on this list, and so I'm, and it's, uh, it's even got Steve LeDoux in there for a term in 2020.
Well, we, um, I think we should consider this inactive, um, and not do appointments, because we, that's the case.
Was the personnel board created by an article of town meeting? I think it may have been, I'm not sure we can just expand it.
I don't know.
Yeah, I think we need to look at that.
Yeah, I, I agree, I, so it's, it's one I would not like to appoint tonight, that's one, that one's one I would like to hold. And then, uh, recreation commission, I also think it should have a stagger. Um, I had a question about the traffic and pedestrian safety committee and why we have a one-year term for that. Again, you know, these one-year term things, um, especially when you have staff on them. You know, do they have to go get sworn in every, every year, being staff and everybody?
Yeah, in the interest of time, I, I, you know, I think it's, it's a really good idea to try to update some of these things and, and look on the, at the terms, but in the interest of our agenda for tonight, I think if we can focus on the appointments, and if we, so we want to hold off on the personnel board, but if we could, and if you want to share your notes with others after the meeting.
Okay, I will.
Can I ask, why, 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 why hold off on personnel board? And we can always, if we wanted to just ban it later, but what if something comes up and we need the personnel board?
Well, because we've authorized, we've authorized the town administrator to act on his own. I don't know if you remember.
Plus.
We made that change.
Plus, in the, in the, in the, in the personnel policies, it was, was amended so that, for example, um, uh, the position of assistant assessor, because the assessors couldn't get the, uh, personnel board together, that it, it comes back to the town administrator making a recommendation to the select board, and the same thing with the, with the, the new plan or position. So there, there's mechanisms, if, if they can't get together or whatever, there's mechanisms to keep things moving forward.
Okay.
So, I, I, well. Vanessa Brown.
Let's not go over the Personnel Board.
Okay.
We already know that that we've got Steve covered to be able to make decisions and we also know that none of them are. Are responding to meetings.
Okay. And the last one, let me see, I did have one, okay. The Transfer Station Action Committee. You have Laura Snowden as newly appointed and for some reason her, well, her term is twenty twenty-three. If it's a one-year term, how can anybody have a twenty twenty-four term? And everybody else is listed as twenty twenty-four.
When we appointed the, the, I'm just so I can look on your thing. When we appointed the Transfer Station Action Committee back in whenever that was, January, February, when we approved that charter. They started off with everybody on a two-year term and then agreed that as people came on, they were going to stagger the terms. So that's why they're listed as twenty twenty-four. The the current group, except for the new person, Laura Snowden, who I think we just approved at our last Select Board meeting. So the goal is to get to, yeah, the goal is to, yeah, because she wanted to try it out for a year. And so the goal is to then start staggering it as these two-year terms are up.
Well, it was confusing.
Yeah, yeah. No, I get it.
Okay, that was my, those were my questions for the.
If we're talking about the newly appointed ones, though, there's one that I noticed with the Zoning Board of Appeals, which is the last one, which I think. Eric Adams was voted as chair and I think he would bump up to a standard member, but I don't know what the term would be.
Yeah, he's the chair.
He's the chair. Right, right.
Okay.
And then, yeah.
An associate would be vacant. So somehow that didn't get, so shall we? Did the, do you know, did ZBA vote him in his chair?
They did vote him as chair. I do know that. But I don't, I assume that he is be a full member.
So it looks like he has moved up to this vacant chair here.
The vacant.
The vacant was my seat.
I think that, you know, last time we we identified all these things, but for some reason we went ahead and we appointed some people. And that might be throwing us off because last time we did appoint some people. And I think zoning appeals was one of them. Guess that because there's no checkmarks asking us to appoint again.
Checkmark means they want to.
The checkmark means they've been asked and they want to continue.
And there are no.
I don't, I don't know if he was elected in that last meeting. I think it's been subsequent to that. Could be wrong.
Which ones in our last meeting, I guess we could look at our minutes, right?
We don't have any minutes unfortunately tonight for for last time. So.
And then this could.
Okay, I'm sorry to complicate it.
No, no, that's okay.
We should figure out what we're gonna do.
Yeah.
From a procedure standpoint.
Yeah. Will it, will it, will it, you think it'll hold up the Zoning Board of Appeals if that group waits until July twelfth?
They do have a meeting, the first non-holiday, so not the fifth, but the next, because the fourth is a Monday, so the next.
Night before our Select Board meeting. So we probably do need to approve at least. The three voting members, right? The associate members don't vote.
That's true unless one, if a full member is not present, then the associate will fill in. You have some twenty-four people, right?
We have twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-three.
You got, those people don't need to be reappointed.
None of them are, are need to be reappointed. I guess it's just the.
It's just the moving up.
Internal to the ZBA.
Okay.
I just want to make sure procedurally it's fine.
Yeah. So good point, David.
Yeah, I think he needs to be appointed as a full member. With the term ending at twenty twenty-three, because he's taking your slot.
That's fine. I, I haven't specifically asked him, but I'm assuming that, I know he's on there and he's been appointed chair, but.
Yeah.
Or been elected.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay. So I think we should just do that.
That's the only one?
All right, well, let's do that right now. We have a motion to.
We appoint Eric Adams to the Zoning Board of Appeals as a full member.
With the term.
With the term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Right, we need discussion. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries unanimously. Then I think we want to hold off on the Personnel Board. And then were there any others where we said we needed to? Wait? No, I think we have everything else. It's more about the terms, right? So we'll come back. And and then the one other change is that Barney Arnold's. Term should be, yeah, okay.
So I move that we appoint Courtney Miles Good Larry as the RecCom. Representative. I don't know why these, excuse me, since, again.
I think all you need to change is my term and then we'll vote to approve the entire CPC committee. Along with all the others.
All right.
We can do it all together.
I move that we change the term for Barney Arnold and the Community Preservation Committee. To be, to. Be June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
All right, and then I think other.
That was voting to just change her term?
Well.
We haven't voted for you to be on.
Yeah, that's why I was gonna do the whole.
What I was gonna say is just, well, okay, we could do the whole thing at once. What I was thinking is if we approve that change, then. We can just take it separately, but then we could approve all of the committees all at once. Do you think we should do it separately?
We didn't vote on this document, so we don't need to vote to change the document.
Yeah, I, I feel like we shouldn't.
Vote on the appointments of all these people.
But then you'll never get to the stagger. I mean, I, it seems to me like, I, I would, I recommend we form a little subcommittee. Like Kate, to work with Steve or something and just sort it all out with the charters and the terms and make rec, make a complete slate of recommendations. These, this is what we recommend. And then these charters, get the stagger, get it all cleaned up. We can vote piecemeal tonight for people that have to meet between now and then, but it just doesn't reflect well on us that we're also just joining on this.
Terrible. But what, what ones do we have to vote on right now?
Well, you know, there's a whole bunch that don't need to be fixed. How about we vote on the ones that don't need to be fixed?
It's a piecemeal, though. If they don't need to be fixed, but they're not meeting, who cares?
Last time when we're still.
Yeah, we're still futzing around. I agree.
Let's vote on the ones that absolutely need to meet between now and July twelfth.
Well, we did that for.
We did that for Eric.
Fincom?
They're all set.
We've already appointed Aaron.
We already appointed Aaron?
Yep. Yeah, we appointed that a couple meetings ago.
And the last story, well. How do we know what we did and what we didn't do?
You got, that's part of what you gotta do is go back through the minutes.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, okay. Right.
So are there any that absolutely need to be?
Well, I'm assuming Concom, I'm guessing they meet pretty regularly. I don't think that stops over the summer. CPC, we already set a meeting for July something or other. I've forgotten the date. Seventeenth or something. So that could wait till after the twelve. I mean, that could wait till the twelve. But like Concom has two members that have agreed to serve and their terms expire on Jurors Day.
No, I think, are, were they reappointed or they weren't? Were they, Nick and Helen were not appointed last time? I mean, it doesn't really matter because Lee and Alex and all those guys can eat and they can sit in. I mean, again, let them.
They can't vote then.
They can't vote. That's it. They don't vote. So, you know.
They do have a point.
Right.
Celebrations we don't need to worry about, I think, right now. Like, they don't do, they don't do anything over the Fourth of July, do they?
If they do, they've already planned it.
I know Peggy is quite concerned about getting the Board of Registars all set to go because of everything that's coming down the pipe for her, but. I think it could wait till July twelfth.
Audit Committee, ARCA doesn't have to be done. Agcom.
You guys meeting?
Yes, I mean, we're meeting this seventeenth.
But you're already, but you have. You're, you're already.
We got the.
That are all, that their terms are longer. No, but I know, but you have one, two, three, four, five. Maureen stays on till it's filled, right?
There's still three.
Oh, four, sorry. You got four. Kate, Martina, oh, you got five. Carolyn and what?
We only have three members that go to twenty twenty-three. Everybody else is expired.
No, no. Oh, I see what you mean. You want the, the first two would need to get.
Yes.
Appointed.
Yes.
And so do you need that done tonight?
A member of the public is saying that. Lapsed committee members on all town committees can vote until replaced. Is that true?
David?
Lapsed. Members whose terms have lapsed on all town committees may vote until replaced. I think that's true.
All right.
So I don't think we need to take any of these actions.
All right. Good. Let's do it. Let's do it all in one piece.
Now, I will say unless somebody on the board is prepared to volunteer to work on all these terms and charters, we are not gonna have that all figured out by July twelfth.
Not necessarily the charters, but certainly on the terms so that we can.
Well, and also dig in with Jen on the minutes to know which ones we voted on.
But, um.
Yes, we'll do it all over again.
What are, what are we, what are we looking to do to fix this? So we want, we want to take a look at the terms. We want to make sure that the people we think are on are on. We want to know when their term expires.
Yes, yes.
And we need to know whether or not they are part of a committee or not part of a committee, that can appoint as part of that committee. And but we're gonna match it back to what the charter is, not what we think it should be.
Right, exactly.
To the charter.
That's correct.
And.
We work on that.
Thank you.
And also determine, right.
I do like, I think with Dave's idea of putting in for this, obviously not on the website. Who is previously in the role would be very helpful for us.
Right.
If, if it's such, or whether they're.
Completing someone else's term.
Please, I mean, is term, are they a rep of another committee?
Right, right.
Just, just that historical.
Yeah.
Not just to crush that.
Yeah. And and the other thing is if if there are people whose term expires and they haven't indicated their interest, whether or not they want to continue, that that needs to get. We need to find that out from those individuals. And some, number of people, Jen has reached out to those committee chairs to ask and some of them have not responded.
Can I request that, that Steve Hinton be appointed to Municipal Facilities Committee so that I don't have to attend after thirty?
Facilities Committee to replace Kate at her term.
So to, well, his term will be a three-year term to, which would end at twenty twenty-five. No, well, actually, he's gonna be placed, he's actually replacing, yes, well.
To do it to a term to end twenty twenty-five.
Right, okay.
Second, may I have a second?
Four. That'll get them four people.
May have a, may have a second.
I second that.
All right, any discussion about approving Steve Hinton to join Municipal Facilities Committee? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That is.
And there's one more vacant position.
Unanimously.
One of you guys got to take.
All right, unless there's something else on here that anyone sees that needs to be approved tonight. We are agreeing to hold off until July twentieth, uh, July twelfth, our next Select Board meeting. Alrighty.
Okay.
Let us move ahead then on our agenda. To the liaison assignments. And again, we have an updated list.
Ignore all the appointed ones until.
And what's your thinking there, Nathan?
Well, we'd be appointing two boards that we just said we wanted to clean up, the appointment.
But these are just liaisons. These are not. Or where they'd be voting members.
Talking about the appointments.
Yeah, okay.
That's the very appointed ones.
Yeah.
We see, well.
That's all right. July twelfth is okay on all of these, I think, except maybe. And MFC can wait, right? We have enough people to vote.
Now that, yes, now that there's enough people to vote.
All right, is everyone comfortable with that? We'll wait on the appointed. Individuals section and then move down to the liaisons. We have town department liaisons where we, there are names on each one of these for us. And the boards and commissions, the only opening is for planning, which. Travis and Nathan, you, you two are.
We just discussed it.
And.
Planning.
Okay, so Nathan would go in for planning.
Travis will be municipal facilities.
When we. When we do that. Okay, great. Then.
I would like to talk to Dave about Highland because I would like to be on that.
I'll defer to Nathan.
You can take it.
So you want to be that?
Yeah.
All right, David is fine with that. So we'll make those changes. Can you go back up a second? So Highland is also appointed though, so we'll, we'll do that at our next meeting, but we'll indicate that it's David for Highland and it's. I mean, sorry, Nathan for Highland and Travis for MFC. So the section below that, all the section, the whole section that says liaisons. Not, not the new committees, but the town departments, the boards and commissions and the working groups and task forces. We have an individual for each one of those. So is that something we generally vote on, these liaison assignments? So may I have a motion, please, to accept those liaison assignments for the town departments? The boards and commissions and the working groups and task forces.
I think, just to clarify, planning would be NV, not TS. Cause it's TSNB right now.
Correct.
Yes.
And I would like, can we, can I just put a hold on IT? Because I wanna, I wanna, I want to suggest that that become a full committee and not a working group. I think it's.
I second that motion. Yes.
Working group.
Yes.
Comes under the direction and the.
So can you define those for me? What is it?
A working group is. A, a, a group of people that we have directed the Town Administrator. To work on a particular item. It's totally under his jurisdiction. It's not a public meeting. There are no minutes. And the, the Town Administrator reports back on the.
So then governance is not a working, governance is a task.
I'm not sure what governance is. I'm talking just about IT.
Oh, IT, okay.
I, IT is a working group and I, I think it needs to be a full-fledged agenda minutes with a chair. Committee. And so I would like to pull that out. I'd be willing to work on the charter for it.
Okay.
But I, I think we need to elevate it and it's important.
I would, I agree with that, but I would like to see some document where we know, where we actually, we agree on a definition between. Working group, task force, board, commission.
Yeah.
Committee.
Right.
Right. I don't know what any of, I mean, this is the first time I've heard any explanation.
A workforce is.
Anything you want it to be is what you told me, so.
Right, and it's completely under the direction of the Town Administrator. We just say, hey, Steve, could you do this? And he just comes back and reports.
Steve, they're not hearing you.
Oh, okay. Task force generally is, there's a task and it's, but the task is completed, the committee dissolves.
Anyway, it seems like we have a general understanding of, but it'd be great if we could write all that stuff down. I don't know who.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we, did we get a motion on the floor?
Not yet.
I think we're proposing one and the proposed motion would be that. With the following changes. We would approve the liaison assignments for the town departments. Under the boards and commissions, changing TSNB to NB.
No, you gotta go one at a time.
Sorry for planning.
Start with the appointed, the MFC.
You don't think we can do town departments, boards and commissions and the.
We're not doing appointments at the top yet.
Sorry, yeah. No, we're skipping appointments.
Oh, okay.
Because of the other issues we just did, right? Okay.
Got it.
So let me try that again. So you want to make the motion and with that correction and holding off on IT?
Okay, so I move that we approve. Okay, so I move that we approve the list of liaison assignments for town departments and boards and commissions with the change that under planning, it is only NB and not TS and NB. And the working groups, except that we hold out IT as presented tonight.
Second.
Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is unanimous. And so this will be posted on the website, hopefully. And then I think generally we, we do some kind of a press release. Anyway, we'll make sure the word goes out on this and then obviously we'll communicate with the affected town departments, boards, commissions and the task forces. Okay, that is the end of the liaison assignments. Okay, phew. All righty, so maybe we, we're at eight fifty-nine.
Can we do the goals next time?
We keep on pushing them off, didn't we?
What is our, what's our goal about the goals? So talk about the ones we want to.
We wanted to review our, the, this page, which I've been carrying with me for the last two meetings, right?
Yes, and I.
Okay, let's jump into it.
And we, yeah, because right now we're talking about not the July twelfth meeting, but the July twenty, twenty-eighth meeting being the goals discussion with Ryan, assuming he can make that. So it'd be good if we could do the review, at least start it tonight.
But is the, is it, is the point of the review to say whether we accomplished or didn't?
Yeah, we're just talking about how we did.
I said, no, no.
Set goals, how did we do?
Yeah. And it helps inform us then when we're going to talk about our next year's goals when we get to that.
We have an hour, okay.
Well, we, I think we can cut it shorter than that.
I mean, to do everything, we have an hour.
Oh, oh, total mean on our regular agenda, right, right. I think, I think we can do this.
I think everything else is fast.
Okay. So we're at nine oh one, let's say we can go till nine thirty on this and then we'll, we, I think we can complete the rest of it unless, Steve, do you have something, you have, we have ten minutes for you and the town administrators report, is that okay? Okay. So if you have the paper in front of you, you know, that we've, we've circulated before and I, it might actually be in the packet again?
It's in the packet.
Yeah, great, okay. So we had five general categories, financial sustainability, environmental sustainability, citizen engagement, quality of education and town staff alignment. And we had the broad goals, those broad goals, in some cases we had language, and then we had some specific short-term goals for the, the coming year. So let's start with financial sustainability.
I don't think we did it. Um, we, the thing is, I think, and this brings me to some part of the point. This is our goal, but we don't, we are not really equipped to do a lot of this. A lot of this needs to be done by somebody else, either we need to hire a consultant or there has to be some staff that buys into this. And we, we're in, we were frankly in a state of flux last year, especially with staff. And I don't think the staff was, had bought in to this. And a lot of the stuff, we can start with the financial sustainability, but when I read through it, looking at it, I said, nope, didn't do that, didn't do that, didn't do that, didn't do that.
I don't think we did any of them, and I think where, where, where it fell apart is these goals are supposed to kind of set the goals for the town. I think we often look at this as what we're personally going to do as board and what, that's not our goal.
It's not.
That's not our role, our role is not to do the day-to-day work of town management. And I think we get way too involved in it. I think, you know, what we, when we're setting our goals, we're setting the goals for the town and kind of the tools that we want and things like that. And then it would go, if, you know, Steve was a town administrator, he would build his goals around that and then all the staff would build their goals around.
I mean, a lot of times, you know, when you set a goal, you also set who the responsible party is to, to implement. And, and, and in my bind and, you know, all my years, you know, usually I use these goals or the board uses these goals to evaluate my performance. Okay, so you have, you have some, some, you know, way to measure the administrator's performance by how well these goals are hit. But, but, right, when I look at these, I, I just, I'm trying to figure out what, what are the expectations? Who is expected to carry these goals out? And I just don't see it here.
That's right, so we have a chance for a fresh start.
I, I think so.
Yeah, I'm excited about that.
Yeah, indeed. And we, you know, we went, did so much work last spring, if you all recall, on trying to set up sort of a new evaluation process and have, and going through some training with the staff about setting goals, but it just, it didn't, it, it didn't get pulled together and actually.
When, what was the date of these goals? Because I think shortly after we did these, these goals.
Last summer.
Tim said, I'm, I'm, I'm.
No, I mean, I don't want to put it on his show, I think Nathan has it exactly right. And it's what we talked about at the evalu, you know, at the end of our interview session, when we were thinking about the kind of leader we wanted, I mean, this was exactly right. We, we need somebody who is going to say, yes, I want to be part of that. And I, I, I hope, I assume we can get Ryan to this end of July session.
And he, he had, he had said he would, he would be there.
He said that he wanted to be.
Right, I bet, I would, yes.
Good.
And, and, I mean, this can be a springboard, that's why I kind of asked you about the maya capes, okay, so we, you know, we suck, okay, we got that. So now, moving forward, you know, we can use these as a, as a groundwork for thinking about what realistically goals we want. And I think exactly what you said, Steve, ones where we expect lifting to be done by the daytime government with our guidance.
And I, and I think the other, other thing that generally has worked well is, is some of the boards I've worked in the past that we have a quarterly update by the, by the town manager administrator as to where we're at with the goals. So there's like, you know, we don't get to the end of the year and say, geez, what, what happened, you know?
Exactly, right.
You will be at the goal-setting process, right? Will you be there, I mean, for the drive?
No, it would be great, I mean, it would be great.
I think you guys.
I'm afraid you'll.
I saw the payroll.
You're still on the payroll, Steve.
Even if you're not there as the town administrator, your experience in town setting goals, I think would be great.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Wonderful opportunity for us.
I'll be there.
Great, good.
Did you, by the way, and this is not, I think this is fine to ask, did you have any conversation with Ryan as to the notice period he needs to give?
Six weeks.
Six weeks.
And he's already given it.
Over the break between.
Yeah. The other thing we also have to keep in mind is that now we have a master plan that, that we didn't have last year and so.
We should, yeah.
That's a big piece of what we want to be looking at and figuring out priorities and, yeah. That should feed into those goals. So I, I do just want, so we don't, well, let me just say, under, yeah, under environmental sustainability though, I want us to, you know, recognize that we did do some things, which is like getting the EV chargers going, getting the solar up and running at the school.
And we are interviewing for sustainability director.
Right, and we also had the whole transfer station task force did their work and they're moving ahead to reduce our environmental impact at the transfer station. So we, we did accomplish some things under environmental sustainability. I wrote a few notes here, oh, and, and then under the citizen engagement, I, I do want to just, you know, compliment us that we started a process, I think it was started last summer, where we identified the various boards and committees and, you know, we've tried to, been trying to rotate people through coming to talk to the select board. And we haven't reached all of them, but I think if, I don't have the list in front of me, but we did have, we made good progress in that goal of which, where we said we'd meet at least once a year.
Nathan and I will do the committee chart, charter and team reviews.
Which would be great.
We get that done before thirtieth, Nathan, we will have.
Right, right. And, and I just say, under the education, under the education goal, I think that there was also very good cooperation between the school and the town throughout COVID, which was a, which I think also helps then create a, a good relationship in terms of trying to discuss the shared custodial work and work more closely around facilities, all of which I think is moving us in a good direction in terms of.
And we had a very successful negotiation with the, the teachers and this board was involved in that.
Right, right. So and under the town staff alignment, I think we already addressed that, which we made some progress on the, on creating a process, but implementing it didn't, didn't happen. That's my two cents on our evaluation of our twenty twenty-two goals.
And I would ask Barney then of you or, and taking David's point, because he's always talking about process, so, and I agree. What is our process then for these goals going forward? Are we going to, you know, wait till the, to the new town administrator comes on and then we'll have a discussion? I mean, what, how, how do you envision this playing out?
Well, here's, this is my thinking and then obviously we should all chime in and have something that we all think makes sense, but because Ryan is, we've, we've, you know, we've, we've chosen him and I think we're going to have a successful contract negotiation with him. And he wants to be there for our goal-setting. If we want to go ahead with that July twenty-eighth meeting as a goal-setting session, which is, that, that would be one, that could be the first step. And if we want to do that, then we should, we may want to have maybe two of us sort of be the little subgroup that sort of plans that further. How is that going to work? Do we want to get anybody from the outside to come in and help us with that conversation? Is it more, it's going to be a discussion, an open discussion, but we're not going to try to reach any decisions and we'll get a sort of a draft out of that or at least some sense of where we want to go and then revisit that in August or potentially not until the beginning of September, depending on everybody's schedule and when we get the town administrator actually on the payroll. But that was, that's what we've talked about so far. Comments? Suggestions, reactions?
When's our first meeting to talk about these goals then? The twenty-eighth?
The twenty-eighth.
Well, twenty eighth, right? And the town administrator, Brian will be there.
Yep.
Great.
And Steve Ledoux.
And Steve.
I mean, the idea behind the summer goal-setting is because summer's quieter and it's a breakpoint between the two years, right? And the, the discipline, I think, on the twenty-eighth is around making sure we just focus on that for the meeting and spend the three hours or however long we need, we have dinner, whatever, just make it more relaxed and very, very, well, relaxed and focused are two different things, but, you know, focused and not stressful, let's say. Try to, you know, just really think strategically. So then where we've fallen down, I think everybody's kind of on the same page. We, we've talked in big picture, I don't personally believe we need a facilitator. I think we have a good understanding of what's in front of us. We have a good start here, we have a master plan, we can all do homework and refine our own vision of what is important for us, what's important for the town and of those, what are the things we can have an impact on? And then I think, yes, because Ryan will be a proactive participant and he's already come out with, you know, his year, what to do. We, we should, we should be able, I mean, I don't want to pre-design the thing, but given we've had a head start on goals and we didn't do a good job on goals we already agreed on, so presumably a lot of those goals will reappear in some form because we put them down because we thought they were important, we just didn't do much on them. We could be more tactical at that point.
Yeah.
And start framing out maybe to Nathan's point, what is strategic for us to do as the board of directors of the town? And what is tactical for Ryan and his team to take on? And, you know, eventually, and that's definitely not that meeting, begin to work at resource gap, which he will be, right? Okay, you wanted me to do this, here's what I got, you know, here's what I need. I think just starting that and getting a head start on it, it's not going to be overnight, right? But it'll be fine.
But I, I think also to facilitate, if everybody brings, you know, five or ten overarching goals to the table, whatever, five, whatever, one, two, as long as people, you know, kind of think about it before they get here and bring some, you know, some ideas.
Now, as Barney pointed out, we have a master plan.
Right. So you got to, yeah, you got to review that.
Vote from, it's difficult to get even in a democracy because of the way Master Plan did its many surveys. We have data. I don't think so, right? That's pretty good.
Yeah. Thoughts, Nathan, or Travis?
This is great.
So it sounds like we're agreed on, we are going to sep, we're going to set aside that meeting, it's not, sorry, I keep saying twenty-eighth, it's the twenty-sixth of July, which is our regular fourth Tuesday of the month.
So just because of this conversation, there is a committee missing on our liaison things under the new committees, because we don't have a master plan implementation committee on there. I don't know what happened to that. So we need, it dropped off somehow, so we need to remember to put that, Nathan, you and I, okay?
Well, again, just let me mention though that we, we've said we want to have a meeting with the governance task force because one of the questions is, I'm sorry, not the governance task force, sorry, the master plan steering committee. One of the questions is, do you want to have a separate implementation committee? Or do you want to have more, I don't know if you want to call it, you know, ma, a manager group, but that the various boards and committees that have, that, that include, that have something in the master plan being suggested that would naturally fall to their responsibility, have them identify what, what they could take on this year, you know, this next fiscal year out of the master plan? And so it's, instead of having it, and the, and the reason this has been raised is that the worry is that if you create a new committee, that the various boards and committees and even staff members for that matter, will, you know, won't feel as responsible for implementation, selecting parts of the master plan that they think they can carry forward.
Well, you know, that's, that's another discussion, but it is, the thing is that we're still going to need something around that.
Some way to follow up on that.
You know, like the CPC where everybody sends, you know, those, those affected places send representatives so that they all know what, you know, anyway, okay.
Yeah. All right. Well, that was great, brief and to the point. So Steve, let's go over to you for the town administrator's report.
Well, Timber Nutt kept their word and vacated the, the property as of June fifteenth. The only thing left are a couple like little logs that are terrific, because I like to go there at noon and, and sit on these logs and look at the pond and meditate for a little bit, so I'm glad they left them there. We, we did some, we did interviews on the twenty-fourth for this shared sustainability director with, with Westford and participating was the town manager, assistant town manager of Westford, a, a, a woman from their kind of green community, Bob Zog and myself. We interviewed two candidates, both very qualified, approach things differently. Westford HR is now doing background checks on them. We may have a follow-up meeting this week, it's not determined yet to, to vote on, on one of the, one of the folks and then we'd be bringing the appointment back to, back to the board maybe on the twelfth and we'll make sure that the candidate is available and hopefully we can, we can resolve that. Or, you know, or maybe decide to, you know, go out for a re-advertising, it's, it's too early. It's, it's too early to tell. There are a lot of vacancies right now and Bedford is recruiting a sustainability director. I just wanted to conquer sustainability directors leaving. So it is, is, it is getting to be kind of an open market. So hopefully we can find somebody relatively quickly. Nathan, I'm going to save the Comcast for you since I stole your thunder last time. And I did have a session with the president of the police union on the 23rd. I think we're extremely close. I think we really are there, but I would have brought it tonight, except I thought we had too many things for executive session. So we'll talk about it on the 12th. Also, we do have a, a request for a hearing to appeal a discipline order by the police chief on one of the officers. We have to act within 20 days of receiving that. So I hate to do it on the 12th, but we may have to, you know, Barney and David and I think we need to talk about some timing and some of these issues on the 12th as well.
That would be part of our public meeting, correct?
I believe that the executive session.
Would be, I think.
Right.
I thought you said he requested to do it in public, no?
No, I mean, under, under the open meeting law, you, you can do disciplinary actions in executive session unless the party has a right to be there and the party has a right to ask for an open session. As far as I'm known, I don't think so.
Okay, okay.
We did receive a reimbursement for $94,000 for, from the small bridge program for the Curve Street and Maple Street Bridge Designs. And we just put out an RFP to upgrade the cable equipment in this room. The RFPs are due July 15th. We're estimating a cost of $33,000. We'll be funding it through the PEG access account, which has some $77,000 in it at the moment. And that's it.
Can we jump into the? Yes. So, see, we've met a few times.
Right.
We met.
Week ago or?
He wants to hear me. We met last week with Comcast. And so I guess a couple of things, they did agree and we've already done the paperwork to extend the process again, which was very good news. So I guess we've met twice since last time, right? And in, in the meeting before last, we, we stressed very strongly our need and desire to have a list of the locations that they covered. What they did was they just gave us a map that gives us all the locations in the town and including those that are not covered. So we will be able to use that to identify where we need better coverage. I don't want to go into right now what that is because we're in the middle of negotiations. But, you know, we have this information and they are working to see what it would be to add additional locations. We have no idea. It was clear that they were saying we would be paying for it. We, we are not done with the negotiations at this point. What I'll say is that we have been very, very clear that getting better coverage is a big process, a big concern of ours. There's a lot of other concerns that are out there as well. We're really very much still at the beginning of this process. I would say though, we did pass a major hurdle, which was, you know, the inability for us to get from them who they served. I, I think, I think if we, you know, I, I'm assuming that we can trust the map. And I think that now that we have this information, we can actually start moving forward much more quickly with them. We pre-scheduled every two weeks.
Every two weeks.
We have pre-scheduled a meeting with them so that we can make sure that we move quickly on the process.
Good.
That's it.
Are there any liaison reports we'd like to make tonight? All right. We do have some appointments in our packet. Can go to those.
I move to appoint William Tice, 38 Audubon Lane, to serve on the board of registrars.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd like to move that we accept John Bones resignation from the board of registrars and thank him for his service and it's effective immediately.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd like to move, for what's a word? I'd like to move that we accept Kate Reed's letter of resignation from the community preservation committee effective June 30th, 2022, and thank her for her light, her long service on the committee.
You are so welcome.
Second.
I'm so glad to be here. We had our meeting, what was it, last, last night? Oh, my God. Yeah, so. It was a good meeting, I have to say.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
I'm just joking, I'm sorry. I said aye, but tonight. Would be opposed to that.
Certainly not Kate.
No.
All right, and that, that's it on the appointments, correct?
Yes.
Okay. We, the, why don't we look at the, well, the warrants are there just for your information. We don't need to vote on those. And I will point out that somehow or other, one of the four, I did not get my signature on, but I'm stopping in tomorrow to sign it with Kelly. Apologies for that.
I move that the select board vote to transfer land in the public burial ground at Green Cemetery described as follows. Deed 776 lot D170, grave 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 to Esther Kraft, 826 West Street, deed 788 lot D400, graves 1 and 2 to Larry Bearfield and Robert, Robin Emerson at 1127 North Road and deed 789 lot D169, graves 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8 to De Gregory Southall, former resident of Carlisle at 225 River Road.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a question. What is, because I'm not from that, what are, is there a criteria for this? Like you used to be a resident at one point, is that, is that a criteria?
And it. Take your pot.
Yeah.
Pay the fees, but yeah. All right, we put the motion on the floor, correct? And did we have a second? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously.
Corrected, because the ones that are packets.
I realize what we failed to do with your TA report, Steve, is we didn't look at the July 12 agenda.
Okay.
So let's take a quick look at that. Just to make sure. And see, I, I don't know if anybody has something they want to.
I just want to point out that the 705, the HRS is tentative at this moment. I haven't gotten the final report from HRS on the compensation study. But I know she is available that night. She probably will be zooming, I assume.
Great.
And the 855 is kind of the, we've kind of talked about this a little bit later earlier, that any, any of your transfers, the board has to approve before it goes to finance committee, which is meeting the next night. The book's closed July 15th.
So we have the, and we have the, I'll check, we'll need to check with Sylvia about CONSCOM, but she had asked to, to do a Greeno Barn update with us. We'll have to see if she's ready for that. She had indicated she would be, but yeah, and the town governance task force really wanted to meet with the select board to discuss their, their task going forward into our special town meeting. And a continuation of the regionalization discussion. And then Kate is, has some agenda time for the Carlisle housing production plan. And then we will have, as, you know, as we've mentioned, we will have an executive session. And also our hope would be that we are approving, not, we'll do the police union contract hopefully, and then hopefully we're approving contracts for the town administrator. And then we decided to, and we want to add back in, I think, the police officer appointment. And then we'll have to, and then we'll also have to add in the, the appointments, the committee and appointments. Yeah. So this is going to be a pack tonight, but we'll make it work. Okay.
Quick question. We, I, I missed a meeting where we were talking with the auditors and kind of going with that review.
Oh.
How did that go?
Well, we've got a whole bunch of notes. I'm happy to share them.
I just want to make sure, because really one of the things I wanted to make sure was on the IT controls, I think.
Yeah. We wanted to correct some things, I think. Did you submit those?
I did, but also I just want to make sure, like, so I did the SOC 1 and SOC 2. I did the SOC 1 and SOC 2 reviews. I just want to make sure that those got filed somewhere so that when I sent them to Kelly, you know, they, they should be filed somewhere and my email should be filed somewhere so that when they come back again, that we can show, yes, they, they were, they were reviewed. So what that review process means for everybody is the SOC 2 and SOC, SOC 1 and SOC 2 are reviewed by an external auditor of the controls. And you had, they put in any findings and then management needs to respond on those findings. And then what I did is I just, I read the whole thing and then looked at the management's response to the findings. And then, you know, I, I just chime in on whether or not I think that the management response was okay. This time they did have managed response on everything. Three years ago when I did this, they had no responses on anything. So I couldn't actually do a, a good finding on it. And I think that might have bitten us, but as long as we're tracking that, I'm happy to do again next year.
Yeah, Kelly's on top of it.
Okay. But David, all of your questions were answered.
I don't know about that, but I think I would say financially, we're fine. You know, our balance sheet looks good. A lot of my questions were learning the nomenclature about public finance. But the two areas of concern have to do with controls, right? One was IT, which you just identified, and the other is financial. And I think I'll defer to our new TA to help us work through that. But there's clearly a need for more procedure, more documentation. I don't think there's a question that we don't do things well. We seem to do things pretty well, but documentation is not our strong suit. Room for improvement for next.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I think unless someone else has something they want to raise, that we are prepared to take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Look at that, ending at 9:32.
Excellent.
Yeah.